Commissioners, we want to welcome you to the Spring Break.
It was a good one. Good, good, good. Commissioner, Williams-Cotz, if you just pull up, you don't need just a little bit. It's a little bit. We welcome you to the Joint Workshop of 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And Artie, you asked if you would lead us through this 23rd Psalm, if you would. Please lead us through it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to go through the proposed Comp Plan amendments for the 2022 cycle. Before we get into the amendments, a couple of slides on just background information and just some context for where we are in the process, kind of starting with, these are amendments to the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan being the legal document that has the goals, objectives, and policies that guide and really serve as a blueprint for future commercial residential development, housing, conservation, as well as the cultural and recreational resources and amenities of this community. Really, one of the main emphasis and the reasons of having a comprehensive plan is it really helps us look 20, 30 years out into the future, make sure that we are really planning for future growth of the community while ensuring the infrastructure is going to be there to support that growth and that we're also protecting natural resources and things like that to ensure that our community has a good quality of life as
That's a good seat, Commissioner Dozier. You can take that one. Go ahead, Artie.
Just kind of a context for where we are in the process. Really, the comprehensive plan, and many of these have concurrent rezonings, are the very beginning. We sometimes refer to it as pre-development activities. So this is the stage where we're amending the comprehensive plan. Some of these will have concurrent rezoning, so there'll be kind of that component as well. But it would be future steps when you get into the subdivision process, the site planning, site review process, where we really start getting into the nitty-gritty. We really start looking at natural features inventories and doing concurrency to look at traffic and trips and ensuring that the roadways are of adequate capacity to support the development. So all of that is kind of future. At this point, we're really kind of in the policy stage of things with the comprehensive plan and the concurrent rezonings for some of them. This is a process we do every year, and part of that is we're really trying to make it more efficient in terms of the resources we use. So, one, it's a lot easier for the public to follow comprehensive plans amendments when we bundle them together into a cycle. We have public open houses, and they can come and see all of them at once. The newspaper advertisements, the notices that get mailed out. That's really why we do an annual cycle. It is possible to do a second or an out-of-cycle group of amendments if needed, but typically, we bundle them into it once a year. And then the purpose of this workshop is really to review the comprehensive plan amendments that we have proposed for this cycle, and if there's any additional information that we and staff need to go back and research and pull up, it gives us an opportunity to pull that together so we can have it ready for you before the public hearings. When we review Comp Plan amendments as well as rezonings, we do have a fairly narrow scope of review. We look at amendments to the comprehensive plan, whether they be text amendments or map amendments, for consistency with all of the other goals, objectives, and policies of the Comp Plan. So really, what we're looking at is consistency with the rest of the Comp Plan. The same with rezonings. When someone is requesting a rezoning, we look at that request and try to determine if it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comp Plan, as well as is it consistent with the future land use category or that future land use map designation on the property as well. Overall schedule, we started accepting applications as we do every year in April. We accept them through September, so the public has about six months to put together an application, meet with us, discuss concerns. This will sometimes result in an applicant withdrawing, because a lot of times, they don't want to move forward if we have raised flags that are of concern, or they can refine their request. So there's a lot of work that kind of goes on in those six months. And then, at the end of that application period, we really kind of jump into looking at the application, making sure it's complete, putting together information to do the public open houses. Then we hold those, and then it goes through the local planning agency, the same body as the Planning Commission in terms of members, but they serve as the local planning commission. We do a workshop with them, a public hearing with them, and then we get to the point where we're at today, where we have the workshop, and then on April 12th and June 14th of this year will be when we have the public hearings, the first one being a transmittal hearing where you get to decide whether to send these to the state for review. The state has 30 days to review it. If they have concerns, they let us know. Otherwise, we come back on June 14th for the adoption hearing. So that's the overall schedule and where we are today. We do have seven amendments this cycle. Three of them are joint text amendments. That means that both the City Commission and the Board will both vote on those because they're joint amendments. We have a map amendment that's a little bit unusual in that it is partially in the city, partially in the county, so both bodies will need to vote respectively on their component of that. We'll explain all this in way more detail when we get to that amendment. And then there's two map amendments that are purely within the county, so only the Board would vote on that, and one map amendment in the city, and only the City Commission would vote on that. That's an overview of kind of what we have in store. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mindy Mormon, who is now taken over as the administrator of comprehensive planning, to actually get into the details of each of the amendments. And at that point, we're happy both Mindy and I will be here to answer any questions you have, and if we don't know the answer, as the purpose of this workshop, we will do the research and bring the information back to you.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you, Artie. I'll just get right into it with the first of the joint amendments. It's a property rights element. This element would be a new element added to the comprehensive plan. It's required by HB 59 that was passed and signed during the 2021 legislative session, so this requires that we adopt a property rights element into our comprehensive plan. This is required to be adopted prior to other proposed plan elements. It doesn't change any of the property rights that are currently granted to property owners by federal or state law. It simply reaffirms them. And that one's pretty simple. I'll move along. The bill does contain suggested language, which we're proposing to go ahead and use as our property rights element. We did make a couple revisions, and those are highlighted in yellow. We changed the words "his" and "her" to "their," and we added "subject to state law and local ordinances" to the end of all four items, with the exception of item two, which already contained that language. So we just decided to carry that through to all of them. Moving on to future right-of-way needs map. The future right-of-way needs map is contained in the mobility element of the comprehensive plan. The purpose of the map is to identify roadway corridors where public right-of-way is needed to implement identified transportation projects. So the updates include either removing completed projects which have the right-of-way necessary, or just projects that have been completed. This is required to be reviewed every five years, which is consistent with updates to the CRTPA Long Range Transportation Plan, and the last time this was updated was 2016. And this shows the maps, the current on the left and the proposed on the right, which includes those updates. So moving on into the third text amendment, it's adjustment to the urban services area. This is a privately initiated amendment, and it relates to three of our large-scale map amendments. So I will go through the maps as I go through those amendments, just to make it easier to kind of put everything in context, so you can see where all those adjustments are. But this relates to the county amendment, April Road, the city and county amendment, Woodville Highway, and the county amendment, Southwood Plantation Road, and that results in a total of an additional 304 approximate acres of additional area inside the USA. And again, I do have maps that I'll share as we go through the map amendments. It's just a little easier to understand that way. So moving right into our first large-scale map amendment, that's Woodville Highway. It is, as Artie said, there's one parcel that's inside city limits and one parcel that's outside and unincorporated Leon County. It's approximately 154 acres total. It's here at the corner of Woodville Highway and Capital Circle. The city parcel is to the west. The county parcel is on the east. And the future land use changes that are being requested, our plan development is current on the city parcel. Rural is current on the county parcel, and the applicant is requesting to move that into suburban land use, which would be consistent with properties to the west. There's a concurrent rezoning on this property, and it's a little unusual. The current zoning on the city parcel is R3, and the current zoning on the county parcel is rural. So the rezoning would only apply to that county parcel, and they'd like to take that into the R3 zoning like the city parcel. So when we do go through the votes, we'll vote on the future land use as a joint board and commission, and then moving into the zoning, it would be the Board that voted on the concurrent rezoning change. And then moving into the effect on the urban services area boundary, that's the red line that's shown on this map. The city parcel is currently inside the urban services area. The applicant is requesting that we move the county parcel to adjust the boundary, so the county parcel is inside the urban service area, and that results in approximately 62 acres being added. And concurrent with the comprehensive plan policies, adjustments to the urban services area are allowed when the property is adjacent to the current urban service area boundary. Now we'll move into the two large-scale map amendments that are in the county. There's April Road. It's approximately 173 acres contained by two parcels. These are located between Old St. Augustine Road and Appalachia Parkway, with April Road running through the eastern side of the parcels. It's a little bit easier there to see the property boundaries. The applicant is requesting a change from what's currently rural, suburban, and UR2 to take the entire properties into the UR2 future land use. UR2 allows for... That's actually the zoning, so I'll move into zoning. Sorry about that. The zoning change that they're requesting is to go from rural OR2 and R1 to take them into an R1 zoning, which allows 3.63 units per acre residential units. For the urban service area portion of this map amendment, the current boundary runs through both parcels. So the applicant is requesting that the boundary be adjusted to encompass both of the parcels. That would result in approximately 135 acres of additional area. Southwood Plantation Road is the last county large-scale map amendment. This is one parcel, approximately 130 acres. This, again, located between Appalachia Parkway and Old St. Augustine Road, and it's accessed by Southwood Plantation Road. And to be clear, this is not part of the Southwood development. It's simply named because that's the road that the property accesses. That's how we named all of the large-scale map amendments. This is approximately 130 acres. The applicant is requesting a change from what's currently suburban and rural land use to suburban, and a concurrent zoning to change from rural and critical planning area to R3, which allows for a maximum of eight units per acre. And you'll notice there is a small portion of the property on the western side that's currently PUD 38, and that would not change. For the urban services area, again, this parcel is split, so the urban service boundary currently runs through the parcel. So the applicant is requesting to adjust the boundary to include the entire parcel. That results in approximately 107 acres of land being included into the USA. And this is the last one. This is the city amendment. This is inside city limits. It's inside the urban service area. It's approximately .39 acres. It's up here, just to the west of Thomasville Road. Just a small piece, a little easier to see on this map here. The applicant is requesting to go from government operation to high-intensity activity center, which is consistent with the property surrounding it. The government operation designation was because of an easement that exists on the property and will continue to exist for power lines, and that easement simply requires that they don't prevent access to the city utility for maintaining that power line. So he can develop the property based on whether or not he's still allowing for access. There's a concurrent rezoning on this property to take it from PUD 15 to Activity Center, which, again, is consistent with what's surrounding the property. And with that, those are our amendments. We're here for questions to provide additional information. Again, this is the point of the workshop. If you do have questions or information that we don't have with us today, then we can bring those back to the public hearings, April 12th and June 14th.
Commissioners, you all have any questions of interest in the presentation as we made today? In particular, questions between the right sizing or the right zoning of both sides of Woodville Highway, the uniform? Any comments, inquiries from the county? What was the Planning Commission's response?
The Planning Commission did vote to approve all of the amendments unanimously.
Okay, very good. County Commission has... I'm sorry, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question. In reading through the material, I noticed you did have your public hearings. Very few people showed up. I didn't really see any opposition to any of the amendments. Didn't see any to Woodville Highway. Is that pretty accurate?
Did not get very many comments on Woodville Highway. We did receive comments on April Road and Southwood Plantation. Those are included in your materials.
Right, but I didn't really see any outright opposition to any of your recommendations for amending the zoning on any of them.
I won't really comment, I guess, on whether or not the comments were received for opposition or not.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Minogue, then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation. You know, the USA, the urban services area, exists to help us contain sprawl. What reason, what compelling reason do we have for these USA expansions? Is there pressure? I mean, with the recent expansion we did with Walney, we've got a lot of developable land. What is the reason from the City Commission, County Commission, for the Comp Plan to consider these expansions?
The request was reviewed by staff and considered to be consistent with comprehensive plan policy, which is that it can be adjusted if the parcel in question is adjacent to the urban service area boundary. And I don't know if Artie would like to add anything?
Yeah, I can add a couple comments. Many of these, in fact, I think two of them, were situations where the urban service area actually bisected the property, and from a planning standpoint, it's really kind of hard if part of a parcel's in and part of the parcel's out. And in all cases, the urban service area encompassed properties on at least two to three sides of it, so this wouldn't be...
Can you repeat that last bit?
In all of the cases, the urban service area, as it currently is, was adjacent to these properties on at least two and most of the time, three sides. And so it's not an expansion out, but it's kind of an expansion inward. I know that seems kind of counterintuitive, but the way the urban service area kind of reaches out and wraps around, so it's really kind of filling in areas that were basically surrounded by the urban service area.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks to both of you. Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do feel strange with my back to you, but I'm going to face the microphone, Artie. You understand. Just picking up on that last statement, not expanding out, but expanding in, we can just leave it, it's an expansion.
It is.
So we are expanding the USA. We've got the list of 12 times that that has happened in the past. This would be one of the largest if we count all three, correct?
Correct. Not as large as, say, like the Walney, which was the last one, but...
That was the largest ever, right? So it's one of the largest. Yeah. So for Commissioner Cummings, just a little nuance here. When Mindy mentioned April Road and the Southwood Plantation Road, there have been a lot of concerns raised by grassroots neighborhoods, Twin Lakes, Wynwood neighborhood, a lot of those adjacent neighborhoods that either utilize a canopy road, St. Augustine, limited access on Southwood Plantation Road, or concerns about April Road and the runoff that may be associated down into Lake Lafayette. Many years ago, we had a lot of flooding in the Timberlake neighborhood, so that Timberlake is right outside the neighborhood part of this parcel. Am I correct on that? Based on that?
Correct.
So I think, you know, runoff drainage through that area and how that might impact the downhill neighborhoods, Wynwood, others, and getting into Lake Lafayette, a lot of citizens within District Five have raised concerns about that. So I have less concerns about Woodville Highway, quite frankly, than I do about those parcels. And, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think we're having a general conversation here, but if you want at any point, we could probably take a vote on a few of these issues combined, like the first two amendments, things like that. But for me, the biggest concerns are the urban service area and April Road, Southwood Plantation, those specific issues. Artie, I know, I mean, as you stated, and we've talked about this for a long time, site plan, natural features inventory, traffic, all those things come out after we do Comp Plan amendments zoning.
That's correct.
And if I'm correct, unless it's a planned urban or a PUD, a lot of those issues won't come back to either Board, and particularly in this case, the city, as they work through Growth Management Department or other departments. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would go through the city's Growth Management or the county's DSEM departments.
Okay. So I think I'll say for our purposes here, if we write a blank check to any development coming, we're going to pay a cost. Last night, I was thinking about Cascades, the redevelopment there. That was a cleanup job, basically. We had flooding on Franklin Boulevard, South Monroe, and it was because past development. I mean, a lot of the work that we do is kind of cleaning up past mistakes, and a lot of that before the Comp Plan was in place. We've done a good job managing our growth in a lot of ways since the Comp Plan came in in the early 90s. I don't think this is about anti-growth or growth at all costs. It's about getting it right the first time, so we're not cleaning up those issues later. Leaving the traffic issues, the canopy road, the Southwood Plantation Road, and particularly the water issues, for some time later without reflecting on them now is giving a lot of consternation to those neighborhoods in that area. So I don't, I mean, I would anticipate, Artie, that you don't have specifics on whether or not Southwood Plantation Road, for example, needs to have any work done, expanded, anything like that, or what impact there may be on the canopy road at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. They would have to meet the code as they go through the subdivision and site plan process.
Okay. So have you all, as staff, looked at those issues and anticipate, even if you don't have the specifics, anticipate any challenges with traffic coming into those various arteries?
We've done some preliminary looking at that, mostly based on kind of the maximum that would be allowed. That's actually something that will be sent to the state. Department of Transportation will review that as well. But ultimately, when it gets to the site planning stage and they have to do concurrency, they may scale back based on the concurrency requirements, but also there are specific protections for canopy roads, and so that might cause them to scale the development back or have to improve certain things to route the traffic up to Appalachia Parkway.
Okay. Can that information come to us at the transmittal public hearing, which will be the first and only time that the public has to speak before this joint board, before we do the transmittal?
We can bring that back.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I mean, I think there are sufficient concerns about the roadway network and water issues specifically, and the density of those two developments in that area. So I can move them forward to transmittal today so long as we get some of that information that would typically come through that site review process. If we have some of that information come back at the transmittal public hearing, I think that would be helpful. I am really concerned about moving forward with this, and then we've also got the quasi-judicial, you know, rezoning that's working concurrently that will come back before both boards, I believe. And getting that information before we move forward on either of these parcels, I think, would be helpful, and quite frankly, it could be helpful for the developer as well. As Artie just said, there may be challenges with the canopy road or others that impact what they're planning to do. So I can weigh, I won't make a motion, but I would like to add that in at some point after discussion.
Okay. Artie, Commissioner Dozier's ask is of a technical nature, and I too had considered the concurrency question. I think that philosophically, in the actuality of me learning that there are no homes for sale in Tallahassee right now, compels me to note we must keep growing. That sacred designation of a canopy road has for years choked city and county commissioners from there talking about transportation expansion, because that means, I guess, respite of trees on the side of the road. We really value trees along the side of our roads, notwithstanding the number of people who run into them. Nevertheless, we have to grow. Philosophically, we have to grow. And I received a phone call from someone from out of our state, city, to have a look on sites, the housing. on sites, the housing, uh, except for high-rise buildings, there are no homes for sale, posted. Uh, we, we can't be stagnated like that. There are things worth coming to the city. In fact, the fact that we have no units available underscores that people do see and recognize the value. Um, amazingly, um, philosophically, uh, my concern is, um, these are the bigs, the applicants, uh, they, they can muscle up and shoulder. But for the many smaller, um, uh, parcels and, uh, capacities who access building a home and, um, development, it, it really exceeds the next generation. Um, and I think that as a body, uh, you and I, uh, commissioners, we have a responsibility to not sit here and let only the huge applicants, um, go through, uh, that housing is only now within the domain of the bigs. And that's the problem that I'm, um, internally grappling with. Uh, it seems that what this signals to me is that we have, uh, the little person is just kind of lost out. And competing against that is the 2.19 policy, I think that's it, where families, um, can split that property. And so air property is about, like, the only way a small person can go, um, if you don't have a family member who will split. Um, and it's, it's just amazing, commissioners. And I think that what we ought to be really hopeful of talking about is making properties available, in particular, some of these rural designations, with one house on 10 acres and stuff, and making this property in Leon County something that other than deep, deep pockets and big, big bigs can beat applicants for. And that's the sad thing, that we're here to endorse big folk only, and we're making no provision for the smalls, other commissioners from county, seeing the other commissioners from the county, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Appreciate it. Keeping in mind that this is the workshop, and we're not actually taking any votes today because we have no public comment, this is the proper opportunity for anybody to speak. Any city commissioner wanting to speak at this time on amendment? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to, to follow up on some of the questions earlier, when we talk about, um, urban sprawl, we, we expanded the urban services area by, um, nearly 5,000 acres, um, just a year ago. We haven't seen that development come, um, to fruition yet. Um, what is our process for considering expansions of the urban services area to limit sprawl if we have so much land that we just approved that hasn't been developed yet?
The comprehensive plan has a couple of policies that, uh, kind of dictate what would be eligible and what would not be eligible. Um, specifically, if you're in rural or urban fringe, you cannot go to a higher density land use, um, that would be concurrent with the expansion of the urban service area, unless you're directly adjacent to the urban service area. So, and in two of these cases, they were directly adjacent to it, uh, and then kind of bigger, uh, bigger picture than that, uh, it really kind of corresponds to the capacity and ability to provide urban services, uh, and given the location of these and development adjacent to it, uh, urban services are basically at the doorstep of these. So, uh, if it's further out, we would not necessarily be able to say, like, yes, you can expand the urban services out that far, uh, but when it's adjacent to it, you can expand the urban services to be adjacent to it.
So, wh- what caps the expansion of what's adjacent? Because if it's adjacent on the outer rims and you just keep expanding outward, we would just keep approving that, so to speak, if it continues to be adjacent?
If it continues to be adjacent, that could be what happens for the, the comp plan.
Okay. Does that take any consideration for, for density or what's already built within the urban services area?
Um, there are provisions that would require a minimum density if you're going to expand the urban service area out and have, um, urban services provided. You want to have enough density on that property to generate the taxable value that pays for that infrastructure. And so there are minimum densities that would apply. Uh, and then we do continually look at population projections kind of out, uh, and if we saw something that was like, okay, you know, too much, uh, there's some comp plan policies that would give us the provision to say, you know, we don't recommend expanding it at this time because of the amount of area that could be developed compared to our population projections.
Okay.
Uh, but as of now, our population projections show that we'll need, I think it was like, like 28,000 units by 2040, so there's still kind of a need for residential units.
And the, the needed 28,000 units, we don't have enough land in the existing urban services area to accommodate that?
That's always a difficult question, Commissioner. Um, we have a lot of land that is vacant, but is not necessarily intended to be developed. Like, people can own vacant land and want to just have their land. Uh, we also have a lot of land that has, uh, the ability to be developed either residentially or commercially, and trying to understand which way that'll go makes that number, um, difficult to, to really pinpoint. Uh, but kind of generally speaking, um, kind of looking at, you know, Wilonne, that'll contain a maximum of 12,000 units, so there's a, a pretty big chunk there. Uh, we know what the maximum residential buildout of that could be. Uh, we don't know that it'll necessarily get to that maximum, but we do know what the cap is. So we're kind of looking at that, um, but we also understand that that's a process that will take a number of years. Uh, the infrastructure would have to be, um, uh, expanded out in that area, which wouldn't happen until a plan year development was done, so we're probably looking a number of years out for that. Uh, so we kind of take into those things into account as well.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, just generally on that topic, I, I think we can't continue to expand the urban services area, um, especially just to continue to add, um, single-family neighborhoods. Eventually, we'll have to look at what's in our boundaries and really look to increase density. As, uh, Commissioner Proctor said, we, we do have parcels, um, that higher density is probably warranted and required and would give access to, you know, smaller, um, skilled developers and owners to really, um, push what we can do, because we, we don't have enough money to just continue to provide services, um, for more sprawling neighborhoods when we can, um, increase density and really get bang for our dollar for our water services and our streets. No further comments today. Thank you.
Great. Couple of questions. Uh, first a comment. Uh, Mindy, congratulations, uh, for moving on from Urban Forester at City of Tallahassee to your position. That's really exciting. We're looking forward to work with you in this.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Couple of questions, you or Artie? Um, so tell me, if these amendments did not pass, the, you know, the text amendments and the map amendments, specifically dealing with the urban services, uh, area, would we be denying the landowners the opportunity to develop? Or what could they do if none of this happened?
Uh, the properties that are currently designated rural, uh, could develop at one unit per 10 acres. So it's not that they wouldn't have any development capacity, uh, it would just be, uh, a very low density, uh, and that is usually associated with septic tanks and things like that, which is kind of one of the things we're also concerned about.
Okay. Excellent. The final city, um, uh, amendments that you mentioned, moving to high density, is this the gentleman that sells the pumpkins and the Christmas trees right there? Is, and so we're bringing him into compliance?
It is.
Okay. Because I know we've, we've had a, a nice working relationship with him on a seasonal basis, so this would bring him into compliance?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, city commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Actually, a question I'm trying to, as a former planning commissioner, I'm trying to figure out the expansion of the urban, urban service area, especially when we were talking about from the south. Um, I'm real interested in that for obvious reasons. We seem to always be ready to expand from the north, and so now there's an opportunity to look at expanding from the south, and I really want to see how this develops, because I did my part to make sure that we supported the expansion to the north, and so now I want this behavior reciprocated, so that we can expand from the south. And looking at what we're saying is our affordable housing inventory that is low, and that we need more, how can we now be concerned that we, we can't expand from the south to help alleviate some of that? Um, so I'm, I'm just going on record to say that I want to watch this develop as we look at it from the southern point of this, of our county. Thank you.
And, uh, the follow-up on what Commissioner was saying, and a good point was brought up on the cost associated with it. If it did pass and we had the expansion, who would be responsible to cover the cost of first and foremost placing the physical infrastructure into the ground?
That would be on the developer.
Okay. So no cost to the city or the county to physically expand the urban services boundary?
That's correct.
Okay. And then once the development is done, water, sewer, um, that would be the responsibility of the homeowner who's receiving those services, who paid for that service?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's a fair assessment to say that actually there is no fiscal impact to the city to provide those services, because we don't have to cover the cost to place the infrastructure into the ground for expansion, and it's the individual consumer's responsibility to pay for those services as well?
Right. And part of the utility bill covers, uh, the sewer service and the fire service, as well as electric and water.
Excellent. Remind me too, and I apologize, I, I know the parcel on Woodville Highway is definitely south of the Cody Scarp, is the other part, remind me, I'm having a hard time picturing it, the other parcel that we're talking about below the Cody Scarp as well?
I believe so. That's something we can confirm and bring back.
Okay. Okay. Because I know these have been properties of interest, you've worked very hard, Mr. Chairman, to transfer from septic to sewer, and I think that this is something, obviously density levels being different of what passes and what doesn't pass, but, you know, I'm conscious of our conversations that we've also had in the past with septic to sewer and municipal services and everything. Uh, any other city? Yeah, Commissioner Porter?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Proton?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Commissioner Porter, are you?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to the question of whether or not we can, you know, you, you said it's difficult to say whether our current USA can accommodate the projected population growth for the next 20 years. I mean, what, what kind of calculation are we doing to begin to answer that question?
Uh, we do a regular kind of evaluation of the population projections. The Bureau of Economic and Business Research, BEER, uh, releases population projections every year, and so we monitor those. Uh, we do maintain, uh, GIS data that is about the, the vacant and potentially developable lands, subtracting out things like, uh, flood zones and wetlands, areas that we would not develop in. Uh, and then we kind of look at what's allowed in that, and so we get some ballpark figures of what our, uh, urban service area, uh, could hypothetically, uh, accommodate in terms of population growth, and, um, that's kind of, kind of really, yeah, we just kind of look at-
Right.
-what those land uses are in place that are the vacant properties.
Okay. And so, forgive me if I missed them, were, were those figures, those projections in this item for the workshop included?
Uh, I don't believe so, but we can bring them back as part of-
Okay. I would definitely like to see that. Um, I took the forecasting class, um, where, where we do some of that, and so I would be interested to seeing that, because, you know, as far as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the comprehensive plan is to be read in a comprehensive way, and it's not like we just say, check, 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 you meet all these criteria, and so automatically you get this. You take it all into consideration, and so whether something is eligible does not mean that it is required or necessarily recommended, um, which I think is important for me to remember, uh, at the very least. And then... I'm forgetting my, my second question. Oh, I, I, this is a little bit beyond the scope, but on topic with what we've been discussing, discussing. What, what are we thinking about as, as a planning department, as far as what tools we can use to concurrently incentivize and promote sort of the urban infill and, you know, some of the parcels that you're discussed, you know, you're saying, there's, you know, we might have the space, but there's not necessarily development being discussed, or we don't have the interested parties. What, what discussions are y'all having as far as incentivizing that growth?
So, uh, there's a couple of incentives in place, Commissioner, um, especially when it comes to affordable housing. Uh, we do have the ability to do a 25% density bonus, um, and those are kind of, especially in areas where the infrastructure is in place. Um, I know we do a lot of coordination with, uh, Blueprint and the city and county public works to look at the infrastructure and expanding the infrastructure. Uh, what we've seen over and over again is, as public investments are made, um, whether that be something like Gaines Street, or even some of the stormwater, uh, infrastructure that's going on on the south side, uh, that really kind of makes it more appealing to development, uh, and so even, even like small-scale developers, um, we do have the Design Works Division, and they will help anyone who comes in requesting assistance, whether that's, uh, an individual with one piece of property, or, uh, as Commissioner Proctor called it, the bigs. Uh, you know, we don't discriminate between who we provide assistance to, so, uh, we really try to encourage people to come in, talk to us, go through our Design Works process, really see what they can do, uh, before they start spending the money on hiring an engineer and a site planner and all that to go through the process. So we try to make it a little bit easier for someone who wants to get their foot in the door, being a small-scale developer, uh, to, to kind of get a lot of that service and assistance up front. So those are a couple of the ways we do that.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, Artie. One, didn't you, I, I'm sure I heard you say that the properties that we're looking at bringing into the urban services area are adjacent? In, in every instance, they're adjacent to the urban services area, so, so the, the, the services, water, sewer, uh, that could be easily extended to those areas for, for the development?
That's correct, Commissioner. And that's part of, uh, the evaluation that we did, was kind of looking at, okay, this is adjacent, urban services are, are there to expand.
Okay. And, and I would assume too, Artie, that, that if, I mean, you know, we, we've got to grow as a community, there's no question. We are growing. It's anticipated that Tallahassee is gonna grow. Uh, how we, how we grow is what we are to determine and where. Commissioner Williams-Cox, your point was very valid and own point. Uh, and so, so with that in mind, we, we just have to make sure that we put the criteria in place to ensure that, that growth occurs, because it's, it's gonna have to occur. We, and we've talked about the fact that right now, we don't have enough, uh, uh, properties within the USA, particularly in the southern part of the city, for growth, even the infill. There's just, there's just not a lot available.
Right.
And so we've, we've certainly got to look at making land available for growth in that respect. Uh, and I think bringing those parcels, at least giving them the opportunity to be brought into the USA, is a prudent way to do it, because we're getting ahead of, uh, where we anticipate the growth is gonna occur, and we may be able to direct that growth in some instances with the kinds of incentives that you talked about, Artie. And the other thing that I'm looking at is, is the inclusionary housing, and we're gonna be looking at how we can, uh, as a city, uh, increase the amount of inclusionary housing in these developments. And so those are some of the issues that we've got to look at going forward, particularly as the, if this housing crisis, and that's what it is, is a crisis everywhere, not just in Tallahassee, but if we are to abate that crisis, these are the kinds of things I think we're gonna have to look at. I, I don't, I don't know that it can be the infill route. We're gonna have to bring more properties into the USA and provide the kinds of services that will be necessary for development.
Ms. Chairman, I think that wraps up comments on the city side.
I'd like to go for round two of the county commissioners, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner, um, um, Welch, and, um, Commissioner Dozier. Mr. Mayor, I apologize, this is our third meeting for today, and, uh, lapses. Commissioner Jackson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. You and I are gonna have to sit down and see who exactly shares that line there in Woodville.
Well, I think up to the center part of the line, half of that is yours and the other half from the center.
Okay. I just want to know which side is yours, so I don't get in trouble forgetting on it. Um, um, like my colleague at the city commission, uh, it's great to see something come to the southwest-
Yes.
-that will be affordable. that will be affordable, hopefully affordable, and have affordable housing opportunities for people that don't have permanent housing accommodations. And then secondly, the extension of public transportation, the possibilities there, right now, both on the major arteries of Crawfordville, Woodville, and Bluntstown Highway, Highway 20, you have to get to Capital Circle to receive public transportation, so I look forward to that. And by the way, anyone that's interested, see me after this, got 441 acres on the West Side, we'd love to see something special like this come to. But I did have one question for Artie, I did not see the St. Mark's Trail in the map drawings, and it looks like the bottom southwest corner, um... the bottom southwest corner actually looks like it gets into the St. Mark's Trail. Is there a way you can send us a map that has that marked?
We could do that, for sure.
That'd be cool. I didn't, um, I don't think it's labeled in here, or did I miss it?
It's not, that's, that's a good point, we can definitely add it and have it labeled.
All right, thanks. All right, that's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, listening to everybody talk, I just want to express where I agree, and I agree pretty much with everybody's statements, right? I get that we want to promote urban development, we want to make sure we're protecting our watersheds, Commissioner Dozier. And for me, I think I agree with Commissioner Richardson, this idea that we have a housing crisis, and I will continue to say that to Commissioner Proctor's point, and, and as somebody who represents the North Side of the county, I appreciate the fact that the South Side of the county is having some development interest. My question, Artie, is, I think informs this idea that we can't let perfect be the enemy of good, right? This idea that, to what extent does the market drive these decisions? I mean, we have a big national builder who's expressing interest in developing big parcels in our county. If there were builders who wanted to build in the interior, they would investigate that market and act on it, right? I mean, is that accurate to say?
That's correct, these are all privately requested amendments, except for the First Amendment, the property rights, and the map, the right-of-way needs map, those were not privately initiated, but all the other ones were privately initiated, so it's really kind of the, the market kind of-
Right, and so, I mean, if we acknowledge as Leon County, we don't have enough housing, there's not enough dirt, I have many friends who are developers, and they can't find dirt to build on that's affordable, especially considering the market for materials at this point. And so when I look at something like this, another concern that I hear from my friends who are builders and developers is this idea that if big national builders want to come into our community, that's fine, that's, they want to build housing. My concern, and I think this is a fair concern amongst the community, is the idea that we want to make sure that housing looks like it belongs in Leon County, right, and not Tampa or Orlando, this massive clear cut of tract housing. But I, again, not letting perfect be the enemy of good, accept the fact that our planning experts like yourself and everybody else and Barry at the county, that we will make sure that those, those developments are conducted in a way, or created in a way that are, that fit into our landscape. And so, again, I, I am looking forward to hearing the stuff that's brought back at the transmittal hearing. I think that concerns about how we promote more urban development is, those are good concerns, I'd love to see how we're making those projections, Commissioner Porter, about what we're going to need, but absent all that specific information, I think it's important that we understand that we, what we do know is more profound necessarily than what we don't know, and we do know we need housing in this county, and if we don't facilitate that need, rents are going to go out of control, property values are going to go even further out of control, and that's a real, real, real problem for regular, everyday folks in our county. So yes, we need a balance, but when I look at the comp plan amendments for, for big developments in the South Side of the county, I cannot help but want to support them, so that's kind of my feelings on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So giving respect to my South Side colleagues, whichever line this may fall on, between District One and District Two, Appalachian Parkway is District Five, so I'm not going to count that as South Side necessarily, I'm going to give you all respect for the other end. As I said, I, I think the question about St. Mark's Trail is a very good one, in that proximity, we're getting tremendous use of that trail and the Munsland Trails in that area. But, so I don't really have a lot of concerns about that particular rezoning or expansion of the USA in that area. It's more about how our current development around the National Sempertery, Twin Lakes, other areas, and the roads there, how these, this type of density is going to impact those roads. So that, I just really want to segment those two from the rest. Artie, just a couple of follow-ups, you mentioned in response to one question about updated population data. Has that been updated with the new census numbers?
The, the BEEER has made some adjustments looking at it, and we do expect in April to have the next projections based on the census. That usually comes out early to mid-April.
Okay, well, see, that, that's interesting to me, because this actually comes from our redistricting amendments in, or item last November, we noted that we had the lowest amount of population growth in this county since 1930, in the last 10 years. So the population projections and these housing, you know, needs and requirements, I've talked to the county administrator about this, we had some information come back at our retreat. I, I'm just very curious what those updated numbers are going to look like, because those projections we had based on the last census were wildly different than what actually happened, and that's with the caveat if our census was good and accurate, and I hope for Leon County it was. So I think those April numbers could be very informative, if we could see some of that, or if you'd be ready to answer some questions at our next, at the transmittal hearing, that would be great.
We'll keep an eye out for the, the new release of data.
Yeah, thank you. The second thing is, we had a great joint workshop on affordable housing, we've, both boards have directed our staff to come to work on a new policy that we can use, and that would be consistent between city and county, we hope. These developments, and I'm going to guess English property as well, they may get started before we have those policies on the books. So just when we think about affordable housing, it's a good issue, I mean, we're all very engaged on that, I think we've done a lot of great work with our community partners, but the conversation we had a few weeks ago at the workshop, we acknowledged that we need different types of incentives and different types of ways to encourage affordable housing, both urban infill and in new developments like this. So I do have some kind of trepidation here about projecting forward that any of these developments are going to meet our goals with affordable housing, because based on our policies that exist right now, that hasn't really encouraged the affordable housing we want to see in the future, the very reason why we're looking at new policies. So just for our staff, if there's any way to bring some of that conversation and that desire into these, whether it's growth management work, whatever that might be, it may not be requirements, but letting the developers know that we are very interested in, I think, mixed housing, we saw a lot on the rentals, I think that would be good. That's going to be more of a city issue than a county issue should these amendments move I just, I'm going to bring this into the meeting, I asked the county administrator, there was some notes and a few comments from citizens about past agreements with St. Joe, if they expanded outside of Southwood, and the $10 million concurrence that would be applied, based on what you just told me, Ms. County Administrator, and this was what I assumed, if the property is sold, those agreements go away, this is something new, and there may be concurrence or impact fees associated with this, but it would be based on a new development, is that correct? Or for you or for Artie?
Artie, just help me out there, just basically the response to the question was, any new development would obviously have to pay concurrence on that, but go ahead. Correct, any new development would have to pay concurrence, I will-
You all talking about transportation concurrency, okay.
That's correct. If Barry's here, he might know, but if not, we can, do you know, Barry, about the concurrency for Southwood, if they sell the property?
That could be brought-
No.
Okay.
That is something we can bring back, for sure.
That could be brought back in April, it was a question that came up from several citizens, but again, I assume if it's not St. Joe developing this and expanding outside of Southwood, that that, that agreement many years ago goes away, and this would be assessed in a different way. So those are just a few other issues, Mr. Chair.
Before you leave that point, though, that's a very, very intricate point, wouldn't those trips reserved by St. Joe transfer, and the trips with the sale of the property would inherently be attached, and it wouldn't open it up for a new consideration, but that they're grandfathered in with the existing trips that St. Joe may have under concurrency, is that accurate or not, Mr. Administrator?
That's something we'll look into, Commissioner, we'll work with our city and county concurrency.
This is a very important point, it goes to one of my opening statements, when you're talking about St. Augustine Road, but this community genuflects to trees over public safety and roads. Now, if we're going to crowd up and add another 100 acres with three homes per acre, you're talking about 300 units, I don't, everybody can add here, but this staff, it never presents for us a thorough conversation on transportation. So Commissioner Dozier's asked for that April 12 meeting, is a transportation, an ecology or environment review, those are concerns that are missing, and I would like to note with each of these projects, in particular, transportation impacts. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, and I think they may have said this before, Southwood, that planned urban development is separate. The $10 million that I was referencing, I believe that was if St. Joe were to expand outside the boundaries, so the trips you're mentioning may be just within Southwood, but I'm glad you raised that point. So the information coming back in April is going to be really critical for these two, for these two parcels, or for these two amendments, and the related rezoning, all of that around Appalachian Parkways, Southwood Plantation Road, and St. Augustine. The, the only other thing, it's a little outside of the specific discussion we're having, but it came up in both of these issues, and Artie, check me if I'm correct here, that we send notices to residents within 1,000 feet of a proposed area.
That's correct.
Yeah, for USA, for rezoning, whatever that might be, and there is, so you all received a number of questions about why other neighborhoods were not notified, because this was such a substantial portion, or acreage, correct?
That's correct, we notify every residence within 1,000 feet, and any homeowners associations that are registered, we can notify those HOAs as well, so they can kind of extend the reach of that as well.
Within 1,000 feet?
Within 1,000 feet.
Yeah, the HOAs within 1,000 feet.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair, I would submit that we may want to consider a policy recommendation in the future, we have a distinction about large-scale amendments and small-scale amendments, if we hit a large-scale amendment, I think that, is it 50?
It's now 50 acres or more.
Yes, 50 acres or more. If we have a large-scale amendment at 50 acres or more, I think that radius should be expanded, because there's a lot more impact than just 1,000 feet, and that just lets other citizens know that, and it probably prevents some of that consternation we heard of, why, I mean, I heard this from some constituents, why weren't we notified about this from Wynwood or other places? It just, you know, it may not generate a lot more comments, because we're getting comments from those neighborhoods anyhow, but I think it's just good form on large-scale amendments to expand our notice. So I can bring that back up in April, but I did want to offer it as a suggestion for all of us to think about as policy direction in the future.
That's why we're here today. Other commissioners? Commissioner Cummings? That's exactly why we're-
Yes, Mr. Chair, very, very briefly, I just want to concur with Commissioner Dozier, I think when you're talking about property enclosure, encroaching on property, property rights, property ownership, I believe notice and opportunity to voice your opinion and be heard is very, very, very significant. So I would certainly support a policy to expand that. The policy that we have now is up to, what, 1,000 whatever feet, to, to expand that to acreage, so that people will be given proper notice, absolutely.
All right, any other comments, Commissioner?
If I might, just as your own point, is, is that, is that in our local ordinance, Artie, the 1,000 feet? Because we've had issues with that before with other properties, and we've expanded the reach of notification, so yeah, I, I would agree with that as well.
That's correct, Commissioner, legally it's 500 feet, but we do 1,000 feet based on our local code.
Okay, and so we would have the opportunity to expand that if we chose to do so?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, all right.
And Mr. Chair, just wrapping that out, that, the motion for a policy direction, that would be appropriate at the April meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
You could bring us back something in June, so we have something ready to go for next, next year? Okay.
We actually are not taking votes today on any, we're just an informational session.
That's correct, Commissioner.
No votes, but Mr. Chair, all of the direction for information coming back at the next meeting, we don't need a vote for any of that, I know you're taking notes, Artie, but we've, yes, so we've got all that, correct?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I agree with, I also agree, I mean, basically with the conversation we've been having, I wanted to weigh in to say that I would also support expanding that notification process or thresholds, and then the last thing I wanted to say is, I, I appreciate what we are doing to, to incentivize the urban infill and, and the expansion of affordable housing, and regardless, my, the main takeaway I want to be from where I'm coming from is, regardless of what we do with these amendments, I personally feel like we have to be way more aggressive about incentivizing affordable housing, whether it's building it ourselves, incentivizing that urban infill, because the trickle-down effect of building new housing should have an effect on, on making housing more affordable and adding more to the, just to the housing stock generally, but that could be year, that will be years out, and there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee that any of the housing that's going to be built, that's on these developments, is going to be affordable, there's no guarantee of that. And so although these conversations are connected, I don't want the public to have the impression that what we are proving right now is going to generate 300 units of affordable housing, because that's just not the case. And so I want, and this is going to be beyond this discussion, you know, I, I still think that even just the inclusionary housing, that's progress, but we still have a long way to go. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Other commissioners? Artie, I think commissioners, if you all remember Southwood, and Wayne, you may well remember, I thought that the PUD, which Southwood executed, the way staff held Tim Edman's hands to the fire, and the movement progression of it, it was right, really specific, right even to the inventory of the number of gopher turtles on the property, the number of eagles, the number of golden esters, ester plants, I mean, enumerated. I don't know why it, it was so, but it really was a meticulous process, and I thought that Southwood is probably the most, right down to my, most minute detail of what they had to adhere to, in particular along environmental features. I don't think anybody's, I've not seen anyone in this community face that. If that kind of standard is applied to, and I think that St. Joe did a great job, in what they said they were going to do, they did do, for the most part. And if that kind of excellence is executed and maintained, but that came from the adamacy of a kick-ass staff that held their hands to the fire, and if our staff does that, and maintains that, that hard-nosed grind, that's what keeps the balance between developers who, you know, because Richardson said it, you know, we're not talking about inclusionary housing, you know, just, just write a check and just, you know, you're talking about that. But I'm looking for and hopeful that as these measures of which we are giving- which we are giving some amber light today, that we would have a staff aggressive, tenacious, exacting. Because if you're not exacting, there's a tendency that people cut corners and we compromise and can never get back what you mentioned about that lake. We can never get it back once we let it go. Finally, for me, commissioners, being honest, honest about things, we talked about the urban infill, and we talked about a little bit affordable housing. I have always accepted that District One, I've always been a commissioner who welcomed affordable housing. I've never been opposed to, had any NIMBY, not in my backyard type attitude. We've always welcomed, received, we opened arms. But the irony of the contiguous conversation, whether or not there's contiguous urban service to St. Augustine Road properties, which it is the urban service, what has frustrated this commissioner is that in the south side, the urban service is likewise contiguous to properties on Crawfordsville, Woodville, inside the Capital Circle. And notwithstanding their standing of having a contiguous direct nexus to the urban service area, everybody's not treated equal, and not everybody's included. Commissioner Richardson was at the funeral of Bishop, Bishop Payton last Saturday. Them lights was off. I got phone calls with urgency, and man, I know they was on you. The great commissioner down here got us, got us down here with no lights, and Bishop Payton trying to get to heaven. And we couldn't get Bishop Payton in the heaven in the dark. I mean, he was going to glorious light. And I got those calls, and I said, folks, and I learned Commissioner Richardson was there, so that was easy, talk to Commissioner Richardson. But we got those calls, and there is a church, I guess 600, 800 people down there. It's next door to Oak Ridge Elementary School. It's across the street from a housing unit. And I'm not even sure if there's some people inside the city limit. It's those questions about the contiguous nature of the urban service area, but it don't include everybody. So when we talk about affordable, south side is open. When you talk about including us, the south side is open. When we're talking about those services, and what the inequity occurs is when there is urban sprawl, and on day one, brand-new neighborhoods have those urban services, the services for which existing neighborhoods yet remain without, but they will pay and undergird the cost, convenience, the services that new neighborhoods will get, and yet they are without. That's the issue at this table that we need some honesty about, some aggressive, aggressive engagement about. And I'm simply asking and saying to you, we're wide open to being all of that south end under the cities. Most people don't know that they're not. Many don't know. But you know where the lines stop, right there at Wilson Green. The rest of it looks just like everybody else. The density is there, the love for, the total community is there. And you can check the block on everything. But when people, their children can't go to the pool, or they got to bring a light bill to prove something, or those issues ought to go away. And I'm hopeful, commissioners, and I say with you with an earnest heart in dealing with this. And Vince Long is probably, Vince, we, our family has some extra plots, you know, grave sites, but I know you don't want to be in a plot with me. You might hear this for eternity. But Vince Long has heard this for half of his adult life now, coming from me, that he doesn't want to hear it for eternity, that there's something about those lines in that urban service area which used to go to Woodville. And the urban service lines were erased, and history shows we once upon a time had it, and it was taken. And those lines have been extended geographically to other areas. And I just don't feel good about it. But, you know, that's for your hearts to, for it to marinate there. We have no other observations from county commissioners. We are thankful, Artie, for your sharing. We're looking forward to the April 12 meeting. We know it's going to be an exciting one. You've heard all of our input as to what we would like to see coming back. Mr. Mayor, other comments? Okay. Want to thank you city commissioners for joining in with us. Thank the county commissioners. Everyone have a good afternoon.